I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
This isn't the first time Terry Noor's work has been featured in Los Angeles. He also painted the Vendi Museum's Berlin Wall segment displayed on Wilshire Boulevard in the Miracle Mile, which represents the spirit of collaboration with our city that began in 2009 with the 20th anniversary of the fall of the wall. And that takes us to this week in tweets. You can check out reporter Rasha Goel posing with artist Terry Noor in this photo posted on LA This Week's Twitter page. That's LATW35. You can also see Noor signing his mural with a paintbrush and white paint. We'll be posting photos and videos regularly on Twitter to keep you up to date on what we're working on. Again, you can find us at LATW35. And Rasha Goel is also working on bringing you the inspiring story of Craig Miller who founded AIDS Walk L.A. We'll have that story for you next week. Councilman Paul Corretts tweeted about it as well, writing, "Today in council, Councilman Paul Corcoran and I honored AIDS Walk L.A. founder Craig Miller. AIDS Walk L.A. celebrates 30 years." And the city of L.A. has a new poet laureate. At LA Mayor's Office tweeted, "Congrats to Louis J. Rodriguez on his selection as poet laureate of L.A. by Mayor Eric Garcetti." The tweet also included a link that shares more information about him. Rodriguez is best known for his memoir, Always Running: La Vida Loca: Gang Days in L.A. As poet laureate, Rodriguez will serve a two-year term promoting the city's rich literary community and celebrating the written word. And at a time when Los Angeles is celebrating a filming incentives tax break package to stem the tide of runaway productions, it's working hard also to attract productions from overseas, namely those from China. Saying, "How are you?" and "Welcome to Los Angeles" in his best Mandarin Chinese, Mayor Eric Garcetti showed his hospitality to the Chinese film community when he spoke at the first official U.S.-China Film and Television Industry Expo held at the L.A. Convention Center.
China is the biggest market for film in the world outside the United States, and the growth has been nothing short of staggering. The Chinese box office topped $3.6 billion last year, and for the first six months of this year, it's at $2.2 billion, an increase of 25% just from last year.
This expo comes on the heels of a newly approved $330 million filming incentives package here in California aimed at preventing film productions from fleeing and luring foreign productions here to Los Angeles. But the translator by her side, Zhang Zhang, from China's Yunnan Film Group praised the inaugural event.
From the feedback from the audiences, they all said they've learned so much about making movies in China and the cooperations. And the seminar also talked about the challenges, difficulties, and what you need to think about when doing business in China or in the U.S.
Seminars hosted by industry insiders were well-attended, and outside vendors from Chinese production companies to American players like the Writers Guild of America and the Producers Guild of America set up shop.
We definitely wanted to be here to represent. The Producers Guild has a very active international committee, and so this is the perfect kind of event that we can represent our members as well as expose the Producers Guild to the many Chinese companies that are here today.
Back in August, Mayor Garcetti also welcomed Kui Tiankai, Ambassador of the People's Republic of China, to City Hall to discuss strengthening economic and cultural relations between China and L.A. And what better way to start than by sending a message to China's robust film market that Los Angeles is ready for lights, camera, and action? And the newly approved tax credits for film and TV production don't just benefit Hollywood, Burbank, and other communities with big studio lots. Smaller area cities are also affected. Gil Reyes reports from a conference of regional mayors in the city of Monterey Park.
This is money that's going to your constituents' pockets, jobs that are going to your constituents.
The city of L.A.'s Associate Film Czar Rajiv Dalal telling this roomful of California mayors about the perks that come with new film and TV tax credits. The governor approved them last month. $330 million in annual tax breaks for the entertainment industry remain the talk of tinsel town. But cities just outside L.A. also receive a 5% tax credit bonus, icing on the cake when mayors from different cities work together.
So wherever you are in traveling, of course, advocate for your city first, but we really want to build a region-wide network of why, you know, your residents might work in my city and vice versa, of why it's important to bring us all together.
L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti thanks city mayors from throughout our region for helping to push the tax deal forward. Now he's asking for more assistance from making sure buildings are retrofitted for earthquakes to extending the Metro Gold Line all the way to Claremont and increasing the minimum wage to help struggling families. Local elected leaders agree there's strength in numbers when working towards common goals.
I think many of these issues, as we all know, don't stop at our city borders. They transcend over. Together, we can make much more of an impact, and many times at a fraction of the cost, which is always really great for our budgets.
And hopefully for our entire region as well. In the city of Monterey Park, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The neighborhood of Boyle Heights recently got a much-needed makeover as folks answered the call of community service. Yana Kay has more.
These volunteers are removing all the overgrown weeds and debris to make room for a community garden. About 1,000 volunteers rolled up their sleeves and went to work to clean up and beautify Boyle Heights, one of the most historic neighborhoods in the city.
Because everyone has to do their part to serve the community, to be able to coming together and, you know, helping people that are in need and people who would benefit from our help.
Los Angeles City Controller Ron Galperin was on hand doing his part and giving folks some encouragement.
That's also one of the greatest ways that we can help with economic development in this neighborhood and all over the city of Los Angeles.
This annual event is put on by L.A. Works, an organization that mobilizes thousands of volunteers to give back to their community across the city.
We think by volunteering and being engaged in the community, you're going to have a much better sense of what's going on in terms of the quality of life for all of us.
Bob Johnson also says this event provides an opportunity for folks from all over the city to come together and get to know different neighborhoods while helping out a good cause. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The Valley's busy Orange Bus Line is headed for major improvements. A parade honoring our law enforcement officials and city leaders support decriminalizing petty crimes. These stories in City Beat. Councilmembers Bob Blumenfield and Paul Corcoran take a key first step toward upgrading the Orange Line. They've directed city departments to make immediate and short-term improvements to improve the speed and efficiency of the heavily-used busway by considering increasing the intersection crossing speeds from 10 miles per hour to not more than 25 miles per hour and possibly even converting the bus line to light rail transit. Starting in the West Valley, the Orange Line passes through each of Councilman Blumenfield's five communities across the San Fernando Valley before terminating in North Hollywood just steps from Councilmember Corcoran's district office. The Orange Line first opened back in 2005. The annual 10-four-day parade of vintage police cars took to the streets a couple of days earlier this year on 10/2. Members of the California Highway Patrol, the Los Angeles Police Department, and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Office all took part in the parade that stepped off or drove off from the Los Angeles Fire Museum. Special guests included actors from famous TV police shows and the police vehicles made famous by those shows, such as the classic TV series Highway Patrol that aired from 1955 to '59 and Adam 12. The event hosted by Councilmember Tom Labonge honors public safety officers and all that they do to protect and serve our region. Los Angeles becomes the first major city to support Proposition 47, the voter initiative on the November ballot that seeks to decriminalize nonviolent petty crimes such as simple drug possession and petty theft. Councilman Curran Price introduced the motion in city council, which was approved by the L.A. City Council. Prop 47 would change low-level, nonviolent petty crimes from felonies to misdemeanors, helping to save California an estimated $250 million annually and curb levels of incarceration, especially among youth of color. That money would then be used for crime prevention and mental health programs. One Valley Councilman wants to get residents in his district started on a path to better health, and he did so by helping them with the ABCs of planting a fall garden. Here's Anna Marcos.
You had to stick your fingers in the dirt for this one. Pacoima city leaders put on their first-ever home garden workshop to get their city-dwelling residents more in touch with Mother Earth, their health, and the joys of gardening.
They have to take an active role in the community as well as in their own health. My district suffers from the highest rates of diabetes that's preventable amongst children, highest rates of diabetes in adults. And so if you get a little active, like riding your bike in like I did today, or planting a fall garden and cooking more at home, not only do you save money, but you also save yourself and the community.
The workshop offered a class, a cooking demonstration, and produce and garden giveaways, as well as activities for the kids.
Especially a city as has a lot of poverty, it's great to have education because the more we know, the better we live.
A lot of times, the things that are offered to us at the stores are not of the best quality, and it's a lot easier to just grow it at home, and you know exactly where your fruits and vegetables are coming from.
Actually, it doesn't take very much to do. Once you do the original outlay for your fall garden, it's a little maintenance. It's just making a little time every day to do a little exercise. It's just a little maintenance.
The big message here, no matter what your income level or lifestyle, health and good food are within your reach. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
There are plans for other similar workshops, including one on composting. In this week's list of things to do, Swan Lake, a treasure hunt in Chinatown, and Boo at the Zoo. Los Angeles Ballet's acclaimed production of Swan Lake returns to UCLA's Royce Hall. Choreographed by artistic directors Colleen Mirry and Thordell Christensen, it's the abiding tale of a swan queen, a prince, an evil spell, and an eternal love. You can catch the performance on Friday, October 17, from 7:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Other dates are available. UCLA's Royce Hall is located at 340 Royce Drive. For tickets, other dates, and details, go to LosAngelesBallet.org. Traditional temples, hidden courtyards, and the mysterious Mr. Lee. We're talking about the Great Chinatown Hunt, an exciting clue-solving adventure through one of the city's most colorful, diverse, and historic districts. The hunt takes place on Saturday, October 18, from 10 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., with check-in at 9:30 a.m. at Chunking Plaza, located at 949 North Hill Street. Once on the hunt, you and your team will search for clues throughout this lively neighborhood, discover ancient traditions, and stumble upon picturesque alleyways and bustling shops. The event is organized by City Race, which plans three-hour hunts through Southern California's many diverse neighborhoods. For cost and other details, go to RaceLA.com. Trick-or-treating, jack-o'-lantern carving demonstrations, magicians, and much more. That's what's on tap at the annual Boo at the Zoo event taking place at the L.A. Zoo on two consecutive weekends, on Saturday and Sunday, October 18 and 19, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., and again the following weekend. The two spooky and safe weekends also include the opportunity to see special feedings for gorillas, elephants, orangutans, and other zoo residents as they enjoy pumpkins filled with treats to eat and play with. All activities are free with paid zoo admission. The L.A. Zoo is located at Griffith Park at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to LAZoo.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And it's become a staple of city life here in Los Angeles, the occasional shutting down of big bustling streets for the car-free festival, Siklavia. Rasha Goel has more.
From a route marked from Echo Park to downtown Los Angeles to Boyle Heights, Angelinos had the chance to head to the east side for the first time at this October's Siklavia event. Even city leaders took some time out of their busy schedule to enjoy the city.
This is the 10th time that we've closed down a space four times longer than Central Park to just experience the lifeblood of the city.
You see things when you're on a bike that you just don't see otherwise, the nuances. You see more of the businesses, you see more of the neighborhoods, more of the details of each neighborhood. It's a really special experience.
Attendees could enjoy the experience by cycling, walking, rollerblading, or just about anything that didn't involve driving a car.
10 years from now, when we still have Siklavia, we're going to look back at Siklavia and say Siklavia was the main impetus for all of us to continue to get to know one another through bicycles and other forms of transportation.
Siklavia has become a celebration of both public spaces and public gatherings in Los Angeles and has received a great response.
I think we should do as often as possible. Once a month would be great.
You see all these type of people and all these families, and it's pretty amazing.
And if you happen to miss this one, don't worry, Siklavia will be back in December and will have a new route running through South Los Angeles. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The term Siklavia, with an O, originated in Colombia where on each Sunday and public holidays, main streets in certain cities are blocked off to cars for runners, skaters, and cyclists. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook or find us on Twitter at LATW35. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Today is Friday, October 17. I want to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. And you're welcome. If any of you would like to make a statement, there are cards in the back that you could fill out and you could actually engage in your government. With that said, Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonn, and Biscayne, Osidio, Englander, Fuentes, Wizar, Corresco, Corian, Labonge, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, West, and 11 members present. A quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Blumenfield moves. Ofero seconds, next.
Committal resolutions for approval.
Mr. Fuentes moves. Mr. Corretts seconds.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
I would love to run through the agenda.
Item 1 is an item known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1B and E may be received and filed as much as the property is an owner-occupied, self-single-family dwelling and is exempt from lien procedures and is paid in full, respectively.
Okay, so without objection on those two items, that'll be the order. Do we have cards?
Yes, there's cards.
Okay, now let's move on to Items 2 through 7.
Items 2 through 7 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, Items 2 through 7, members specials, members special? I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, sergeants, I see that there are some cards. You may want to get those cards as I move forward. We'll send Item 6 forthwith. Okay, let's move on.
Items 8 through 15 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Items 9, 10, 12, and 13.
Okay, let's hold those items. And sergeants, can I, I'd like to get the cards submitted before I call for the vote.
And Item 11.
Okay, any others? Ms. Martinez?
I just called her for cards, but I was going to ask for Item 9.
Okay, Item 9 for cards, but Ms. Martinez herself, so let's...
And also Item 8, Mr. President.
Okay, well, let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
On the continuation agenda, Item 16 is an item which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, specials, members?
Mr. President, I believe there is a request to hold that item, call that item special.
Oh, okay, so we'll hold that. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special?
Mr. Bonn, are you ready? Then the floor is Mr. Bonn's.
Good morning, colleagues. I rise and stand here today to proudly recognize an inspiring act of heroism and a number of the brave officers who saved lives nearly a year ago at Los Angeles International Airport. On the morning of November 1, 2013, a call went out that sent chills down the spine of anybody who heard it, that there was a gunman in Terminal 3 firing a rifle at TSA officers and passengers. The officers you see behind me today heard the call and sprang into action immediately, arriving on scene within 30 seconds. After reaching the scene, these officers quickly fell into active shooting formation and entered the danger zone. Only four minutes and eight seconds later, after that first call went out, the shooter was down. I'm incredibly honored today to recognize these brave men of the Los Angeles World Airport's Police Department so we can thank them appropriately for their heroism and for serving the city so exceptionally. We're here today, Chief Gannon is with me, and Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Mr. Englander, is with me, to honor Los Angeles Police Department, or Los Angeles Airport Police Sergeant Steve Susonis, Officer David Lalaker, Officer Brian Lopez, Officer Robert Pedregon, Raymond Woods, and Officer Daniel Yu. Their quick thinking and bravery on that day last year prevented a terrifying and tragic situation from being an absolute devastating massacre. Last month, these officers were deservedly honored by Governor Brown with the Public Safety Officer Medal of Valor for their heroic actions. This award is California's highest award bestowed upon public servants, and it recognizes extraordinary valor above and beyond the call of duty. Mr. Englander, you want to help me introduce the guys?
I'd be honored. Well, before going through the introductions, let me just say something about these guys behind us. We call our public safety... We call our public safety officials law enforcement heroes. These are superheroes. Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. When you go through the police academy, and one of your most proudest moments in life is when you get your badge pinned on you. When you go through all the training, they tell you what could happen, and you prepare and train for the worst. But it's in that moment, when you hear gunshots, when you see people in crises fleeing and running and screaming in chaos, and the first thing that you think of is running towards bullets, running towards danger, is what do I do to control the situation? And the second thing, as your adrenaline is pumping like it never has before, that you're thinking of is, I want to make it home to my family. You can't describe what's going through an individual, a human being's mind, that you can never train for. But yet, they do it, and they did it. They did it by putting their lives, their families, one here who's married with a little boy, little boy? A boy, little boy at home. And you think, I want to come home tonight to tuck him in. I need to be there tomorrow morning to wake him up and get him ready for school. And all of this is actually going through your mind, and you're falling back then on your training and your experience, knowing full well you're putting your life first before a complete stranger. You're risking everything to save somebody, to save others you've never met. That's not a paycheck. It's not a job. It's heroism. And I want to say congratulations and thank you, all of you. First up, we have Sergeant Steve Suzonis. Did I get that right? Suzonis, all right, I want to make sure I get that right. He's an 11-year veteran of the Los Angeles Airport Police, and he was appointed a field training officer, field training officer, an FTO. This is the one that trains officers. Before being promoted to sergeant in 2005, as a sergeant, he served in the patrol service section for six years, as a range master for three years. He is currently assigned as detective supervisor in the LAX Crime Task Force Unit, and began his career in law enforcement in 1984 with the Long Beach Police Department. And he's also worked for the Cypress and Los Alamitos Police Departments. Please put your hands together and recognize Sergeant Steve Suzonis. Next up is Motor Officer Robert Pedregon. He's a five-year veteran of the airport police, recently assigned to the Traffic Services Section as a motor officer. He has collateral duties as a member of the Airport Police Honor Guard Unit and as Assistant PIO. He previously served in patrol services and was promoted to Senior Lead Officer at the airport and as a field training officer. Before beginning his law enforcement career with the airport police, Officer Pedregon worked in the private sector in transportation. He was a franchise business owner prior to joining the California Highway Patrol as a dispatcher. Officer David Lallaker is a six-year veteran with the airport police and is assigned to the patrol service section. Please put your hands together and welcome another superhero, Officer David Lallaker. Motor Officer Raymond Woods is a 13-year veteran with the airport police and is assigned to the Traffic Services Section as a motor officer, who he's been for the past six years. He's participated, by the way, in eight Baker-to-Vegas Challenge Cup relay races. He's a caregiver to his younger brother, Philip, who has a cognitive disability. Raymond. Officer Daniel Yu is a 10-year veteran of the airport police, assigned to the patrol service section. He has also served as a field training officer for seven years. Put your hands together for Officer Daniel Yu. One of the officers is unable to be here with us today, and Chief Gannon will be accepting on his behalf. Officer Brian Lopez, he's a seven-year veteran with the airport police. He was recently assigned to the Vulnerability Assessment and Analysis Unit at the airport. They handle investigations related to the airfield operations area. He served in the patrol services section for six years. Officer Lopez also served in the U.S. Army as a cavalry scout for 10 years. Chief Gannon. No, not at all. Would you like to speak?
Councilmembers, I'm Sergeant Steve Suzonis from Airport Police. All of us, on behalf of the six of us, especially on the entire department, we're very humbled, appreciative of your invitation and your recognition here today, and we just want to reaffirm our dedication and commitment and care for the traveling public employees at LAX and, of course, the entire city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Colleagues, I'd like to also single out one other individual. There's something that we don't go through as elected officials for training. There's something that your heart and your mind, your experience, you fall on. Four months after taking office, the incident happened for Councilmember Mike Bonin in his district overseeing LAX. Without hesitation, he arrived at the scene immediately to calm victims, to work with our first responders, to give information to the media as information was handed to him in a calm manner. He stepped up, as we all hope we could do in those kinds of trying times, and was challenged to do so, and hit a homerun. He did a spectacular job in ensuring that he could, in fact, represent all of us with pride and dignity in such a time of crises when the entire world was watching. It wasn't just Los Angeles. And he did so with an incredible leadership ability and calming ability to work with so many in chaos. So I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to another hero, and our colleague, Councilman Mike Bonin. Let's squeeze in for the photo. We'll go in the back and do some individual ones, too. Thank you so much.
Let's give them another round of applause. They surely, surely deserve it, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bonin and Mr. Englander. At this point, well, let's go, Madam Clerk, forthwith on Item 7, and I'd like to call on Mr. Corretts. Mr. Corretts, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm delighted that this morning, we're honoring, after honoring that group of heroes before us, two great heroes of labor, Tom Davis and Mike Miller, as well as their union, IATSE. Joining Tom and Mike are other leaders of this fine union who have come to share this moment of pride and celebration. IATSE is short for the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees, Moving Picture Technicians, Artists and Allied Crafts of the United States. Since its founding in 1893, IATSE's membership has increased to more than 120,000. An individual member could be a studio grip, a stagehand, a set designer, a script reader, a ticket handler, a photographer, and you get the picture. IATSE represents countless people whose daily work makes a movie or TV show a success. IATSE and its members and leadership are absolutely crucial to the art and well-being of the entertainment industry, and they're a crucially important linchpin for our local economy and the future of our city, our region, and our state. And I'm happy to say that IATSE, Mike Miller, and Tom Davis work closely with us to keep the entertainment industry here alive and kicking and growing. Mike and Tom are both very nice people, and it's wonderful to partner with them, but they're also fiercely dedicated leaders who never shrink from doing their all on behalf of the members that they so ably represent, and that means countless working families and their communities. Tom Davis has been a business agent for IATSE Local 80 and was elected to the position of Third International Vice President in July of 2001. He's been active in unions since he was a teenager in the AFL-CIO Youth Group, Frontlash. He became involved with the United Farm Workers in their struggles to achieve the basics of human dignity for those they represent. He currently is on the board of the California State Labor Federation, and he's an officer of the Los Angeles Federation of Labor as well. Tom, would you like to say a few words?
Well, Mr. Councilman, I want to thank you for this great honor, and I want to thank the entire council for giving me this opportunity to be in front of you and accept...
Hey, Tom, move the mic up a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We want to hear you. We really want to hear you.
You're one of the few. No, I just want to thank Councilmember Corretts for this great honor and the council for giving me the opportunity to be here in front of you. It's really quite an honor to be in front of this council, who, quite frankly, I consider to be the best council in LA's history. And so I thank you for that, and I thank you for the honor. On behalf of my local union and my friends and colleagues that are here today, again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Mike Miller is an international vice president of IATSE. He's based in Los Angeles, but he represents locals throughout our region, and he's a vital leader in supporting the growth of one of the most significant unions in the United States and Canada. Mike?
Thank you, Councilman. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the council, everyone on it who has been supportive of the tens of thousands of middle-class families that are supported by the entertainment industry in Los Angeles. The entertainment industry is vital to the survival of Los Angeles, and the support of this council is vital to those families that make their living in it. So on behalf of all of them, thank you very much for this recognition. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and both of you have made a huge difference for the better and the quality of life of working people and their families, and that's been a huge boon for our city. So I thank all of you. And I assume that one or two of my colleagues may want to say a word as well.
That's a pretty good assumption. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you very much. I wanted to add my voice to this. I've known Mike and Tom a very long time and worked with IATSE and the union for years. Before I was ever in the council and legislature, we worked on things. When I worked with Howard Berman on a number of Hollywood-related things, and whether it was the film tax credits, or one of the things I found with both of you, and Mike, we overlapped on the Film Commission briefly, is that you really not only have the passion, but you have the practicality. When it came to our issue with CSUN and trying to get things working, it wasn't, you know, all going to combat and trying to figure it out. We figured out a way to get people together and to come together with common sense solutions. And that's what I love about both of you and I love about this IATSE, is that you guys get things done, you have the passion, and you have the common sense to work in a collaborative environment. So I'm just thrilled that you're being honored and wanted to add my voice and recognition. Thank you.
And to Tom and Mike, I just want to offer the services of every member of this council. I mean, if there's ever talk of needing us to perform or what have you, we're at your beck and call, and we will do our very best to help you in your business. So know that we're ready, willing, and able. We have Mr. Buscaino, who is our lead actor, and... But anyway, thank you guys for everything that you do. I've enjoyed the relationship and the conversations, and you definitely are deserving. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Let's give them another round of applause.
And I have individual certificates from Mike and Tom, and I also have a plaque for IATSE, and a little bit of it reads, "IATSE has maintained and enhanced its position as a vanguard of the entertainment industry through effective rank-and-file empowerment, political engagement, and dedication to grassroots organizing, and its members have created indelible images entertaining the world for generations while creating a monumental artistic and cultural legacy." So it's my honor, too. Thank you.
It's a great plaque, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Paul. And also, individuals. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, Mr. Buscaino, before I go to you for a quick intro, Mitch O'Farrell? A quick intro, Mitch O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, thank you. We have some very distinguished guests here today. In the back there, on my left, I would like the students from Newmark School to please rise. Yes.
All right.
Newmark High School is an innovative options-learning community that invests individually in each student through the process of rebuilding confidence, restoring hope, and reigniting passion for learning. Newmark staff have enjoyed witnessing a double and tripling of graduation numbers, credits recovered, and even recent graduates attending UCLA and other high-learning institutions. I'd like to recognize the staff who were present, and that is Social Study History Teacher Michael Olmer. Michael? And Gerson Villarreal, teacher assistant and future educator. Gerson? They were established in '73, but beginning in 2012, the school transformed its learning model from independent study to individualized instruction to all students while providing numerous opportunities for internships and field trips, opening the door to success at both college and career level. They're just near downtown in the Temple-Bodry area in the corner of the great Council District 13, and they are home to the Panthers. Well done. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and welcome. With that said, I would like to defer to Mr. Joe Buscaino. And as, this is for our Italian Heritage Month, and before Joe speaks, it is with great pride that I announce to all of us that are here that in the past few months, Mr. Buscaino has been awarded a knighthood from the country of Italy. So, my lord, sir, sir Joe, I think we should give him a round of applause. Even though, you know, we chuckle a bit about it, this is a great honor. It is awarded to Mr. Buscaino for all of the outstanding service that he has done for this community, his... this community, his community and for this city. And, Joe, I'm just so honored to-- you are the first knight.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I just want to see your sword. But the first knight I think I have ever met.
Thank you so much.
So with that said--
Thank you, sir.
Sir Buscaino, the floor is yours.
That's Lisa Eden from the LA Opera, ladies and gentlemen. Amazing.
All right. Thank you so much. He's like an angel. Thank you.
How beautiful is our city? We recently had the Mariachi Divas here a couple weeks ago, and now we have an Italian opera singer. That's the beauty of our city. Colleagues, it's great to welcome a number of Italian-American organizations here to celebrate our culture, our heritage, and the contributions Italians made to this great city. Come a mo te di voi già sapereati anche se sono americano e nato in America i miei radici sono italiano specialmente siciliano come molte americani i miei genitori sono immigranti che venuti dalla Italia senza gli italiani America sarebbe stato un'azione completamente differente non avrebbe la pizza la pasta il cappuccino Dante Machiavelli l'opera ed i vestiti e le macchine più belli dove saremo senza il modello Fabio la storia di Pinocchio o i fratelli Mario o Luigi ma senza scherzare la cultura italiana italiana ha avuto e sempre avrà un grande influenza della America dal Alpecino Sofia Loren Federico Fellini nel film americano a Mario Cuomo Nancy Pelosi Rudy Giuliani delle politica americana America come un'azione ha cresciuto alcune i suoi radici dalla Italia anche il suo nome viene dalla Italia Amerigo Vespucci per tutti ciò questa mese sono tantissimo fiero che celebramo la mese della erita italiana. As many of you already know, I am a proud son of Italian immigrants. Like many Americans, my mom and dad immigrated here from Italy for a better life. Without the Italians, America would have been a completely different nation. There would not have been pizza, pasta, cappuccino, Dante, Machiavelli opera, and the most beautiful clothes and cars. Where would we be without Pinocchio or the brothers Mario and Luigi? But without joking, the Italian culture has had and will always have a great influence on America. From Alpecino, Sofia Loren, and Federico Fellini in American film, to Mario Cuomo, Rudy Giuliani, Nancy Pelosi in American politics, America as a nation has grown some of its roots from Italy. Even its name comes from Italy, from Amerigo Vespucci. And for all this, it's with great pride that we celebrate the month of October as Italian American Heritage Month. Colleagues, earlier this week, myself with Mr. Sadio put forward a motion to call on the Board of Harbor Commissioners to form a relationship with the Port of Palermo. The city of Palermo is the capital of both the region of Sicily and the province of Palermo in Italy. The city is noted for its history, its culture, architecture, and playing an important role throughout much of its existence, over 2,700 years old. The Port of Palermo is one of two Mediterranean gateways into Sicily. The port's largest export category is roll-on, roll-off cargoes, which holds 80,000 to 120,000 TEUs that flow through the Port of Palermo annually. In addition, the Port of Palermo is of call of the Mediterranean cruise ship itineraries with upwards of 5 million passengers annually. The Los Angeles community of San Pedro is home to the Port of Los Angeles. San Pedro is also home to the large Italian-American community, many of whom immigrated to this area, as we all know, to work in the port, the fishing industry, and shipbuilding industries. It's with great hope that we work with our Italian-American Commissioner Anthony Perosi, who's also joined us, to move this forward and work on a relationship with the Port of Palermo. Thank you, Commissioner Perosi. My hometown, the community of San Pedro, is the largest Italian community in Southern California, 45,000 strong. Many San Pedro Italian social clubs and their members are here today, including the Italian-American Club of San Pedro, the Trappeto Club, the Italian Catholic Federation, and from the greater Los Angeles area, the Sons of Italy Federated Italo Americano, the San Gennaro Foundation, and the National Italian-American Foundation is represented here. Let's give them all a warm welcome at the John Ferraro Chambers. And this chamber before us is named after someone who I looked up to growing up in the city of Los Angeles, who I remember sitting on that chair, and I did watch council meetings when I was a kid. Yes, I did. And when John Ferraro called for the vote, and he would say, "Tabulate the vote," it was an inspiration for me to say, maybe one day I can serve this city as a council member. So John Ferraro is within our midst and is smiling down before us. With that, I want to thank the Italian-American-- the Italian Hall, the Italian-American Museum, of course, that we just celebrated the Taste of Italy last week, an incredible event. The amazing work that Mariana Gatto is doing at the Italian-American Museum at the Italian Hall is just incredible. I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Wizar, who continues to support this incredible gem, historical gem, in his district and is at the center point of the Alvera Street. And, Mr. Wizar, thanks again for your ongoing support of the Italian Hall moving forward. I also want to thank Commissioner Saldi Costanzo from San Pedro, who sits on the O Pueblo Commission, who is our eyes and ears, continues to be the voice for Italian-Americans sitting on that commission. We want to thank Commissioner Di Costanzo for his leadership on the commission. With that, it gives me great pleasure to welcome Ariana Gatto, who is the Executive Director of the Italian Museum, to say a few words.
Good morning, everyone. Buongiorno a tutti and buon compleanno to Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell. Happy birthday to Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell. I will keep this brief, as today we're here to celebrate some noteworthy Italian community members. So I would just like to say that it gives us great pleasure to celebrate Italian Heritage Month for the eighth year here in City Council, and we look forward to all of you joining us when the museum opens its doors later this-- well, in the next few months. So thanks again, and we always enjoy coming here every year to celebrate with you.
Thank you, Ariana. With that, colleagues, if I may, I'd like to recognize two recipients of this year's Italian Spirit Awards. The Italian spirit is just that, someone who not only embodies the creative and bold spirit of the Italian-American, but is a pioneer and role model in his or her own respective field. Today's first honoree is not just one person, but an entire family, the Simarusti's family, descendants of immigrants. And help me come bring them, welcome them. Come on up. Give them a round of applause. Larry and Ralph. Paola. Descendants of immigrants from Badi, Italy, brothers Larry and Ralph Simarusti were born in Los Angeles and graduated from Eagle Rock High School and Glendale Community College. Their parents, Pat and Ann, demonstrated the importance of hard work, dedication to family, and community involvement, teachings that the brothers hold close to them in every aspect of their daily lives. In the early 1970s, they purchased a vegetable market on Hollywood and Highland for $5,000 and converted it into an Italian deli. The concept proved successful, and the deli was frequented by numerous celebrities and community luminaries. Larry and Ralph soon purchased one of the earliest Burger King franchises, and in the years that followed, became one of the top 100 largest restaurant franchisees in the country, which operations boasting annual sales topping $250 million. The brothers then branched out into casual dining to become one of the largest franchisees of Tony Roma's restaurants in Southern California. Last but not least, the company purchased the original Roadhouse Grill chain. Today, the brothers own 100% of the company and its related affiliates, including several large real estate developments. The brothers actively aid law enforcement by having donated to approximately a half million dollars to families of police officers killed in the line of duty, and have also donated to the Los Angeles Police Memorial Foundation and the Gil Garcetti's Rescue Youth Program. They also have donated $1 million to Glendale Community College for the construction of a new science center, the St. Francis High School's football field, Glendale Memorial Hospital, St. Peter's Italian Church, and the Cathedral of Our Lady of Angels. Finally, Larry-- Just an amazing heart, an amazing heart. Finally, Larry Simarusti serves on the Board of Directors of the Italian-American Museum of Los Angeles. It's with great pride and honor that I recognize and we introduce the Simarustis as this year's Italian Spirit Award for Excellence in Business. In addition, we will present the family with Mom, Mama Rosa's Authentic Organic Pasta Sauce. You guys are going to have to split it, though. Get in here, Ralph. You do that.
Will you make the spaghetti?
I'll make the pasta.
Thank you.
Okay.
To all our council members, to all the Angelenos, Mariana Gatto, and Councilman Buscaino, thank you. This is really a true honor. We're true Angelenos, and we're very proud of our city, and we're very proud of our Italian heritage. And honestly, if it wasn't for Mariana Gatto, we probably wouldn't stand up here today and get this award, and we're very, very appreciative. Thank you to everyone.
All right. Grazie. And our second and final award, the Italian Spirit Award, goes to Mr. Tony Perosi. We have been really grateful, and we celebrate our sister-city relationship with Ischia. And Carmela Funicello leads the sister-city Ischia Foundation, who's here and joined us, who's joining us this morning. And if Tom Labonde was here, he'd definitely remind us of our sister-city relationship with Ischia. And Tony Perosi comes from that beautiful place in Italy, Ischia. Tony Perosi has made numerous contributions. Let's give him a round of applause. Come on up, Tony, and join me right here. He's made numerous contributions to the Italian community in the fields of music, culture, sports, and media, and has thus assisted all Americans in discovering the Italian heritage. After arriving in the United States from Italy in 1956, Tony began broadcasting sports on Italian radio as part of the Gianni Loro's Italian radio program from radio station KTYM 1460 AM, reporting news and sports from Italy. For 47 years, Mr. Perosi ensured that the Italians in Southern California remained informed on news and sports from Italy. He also wrote in the Italian Americano's Sensione Sportive, Sports Section, broadcasted on local television channels 22 and 40, and formed the Italian Broadcasting Network, which was heard throughout Los Angeles, San Diego, Las Vegas, Fresno, Santa Barbara, and Stockton. In 1982, during the quarterfinal game between Italy and Brazil, Mr. Perosi, through his radio broadcasts, organized celebrations attended by thousands of soccer fans. He later made the first broadcast from Italy heard live by Italian listeners in the United States. In 1959, Mr. Perosi founded the Olympia Soccer Team in San Pedro, named after the 1960 Olympic Games in Italy. Mr. Perosi also co-founded the Italian Sports Association, which sponsored the soccer team. This man standing next to me everywhere I go in the city of Los Angeles remembers Tony Perosi's contribution as someone who they remember him. They say, "Oh, my goodness, I remember listening to him on the radio," whether I'm in the Valley or in downtown Los Angeles, or at the Feast of San Gennaro, at the Taste of Italy. People remember this man, and it's long-- this recognition is long overdue. And Mr. Perosi is one of the most humblest men that I've ever met, despite his wealth of contributions and fame to the Italian-American community. He is a pioneer--
Thank you.
He is a pioneer in various fields, paving the way for the generations that followed. And his grandson is standing right before us, Luca Perosi, who is just a proud grandson. Mr. Perosi promoted Italian culture for decades and is responsible for countless immigrants remaining connected to or discovering their heritage. I remember my mom and dad and my mother-in-law always sharing the opportunity of seeing a live performer from Italy come perform at the Warner Grand. I remember as a kid being at the Toto Cutuño concert at the Warner Grand, and this man was responsible for that. So with that, I present the Italian Spirit Award for Excellence in the Arts to Mr. Tony Perosi.
Sir Joe, I have a speaker on the queue. One of our colleagues would like to say a few words. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joe, I wanted to thank you for doing this. You mentioned the inspiration that you got from John Ferraro as a prominent Italian-American in public service. I took some of my inspiration from my grandfather, William Constantino, whose parents, Paolo Constantino and Elizabeth--
And Mr. Perosi is one of the most humblest men that I've ever met, despite his wealth of contributions and fame to the Italian-American community. He is a pioneer. He is a pioneer in various fields, paving the way for the generations that followed. And his grandson is standing right before us, Luca Perosi, who is just a proud grandson. Mr. Perosi promoted Italian culture for decades and is responsible for countless immigrants remaining connected to or discovering their heritage. I remember my mom and dad, my mother-in-law, always sharing the opportunity of seeing a live performer from Italy come perform at the Warner Grand. I remember as a kid being at the Totocutunio concert at the Warner Grand, and this man was responsible for that. So with that, I present the Italian Spirit Award for Excellence in the Arts to Mr. Tony Perosi.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
I'll look at Betsy.
Sir, Joe, I have a, I have a speaker on the queue. One of our colleagues would like to say a few words. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, Joe. I wanted to thank you for doing this. You mentioned the inspiration that you got from John Ferraro, as a prominent Italian-American in public service. I took some of my inspiration from my grandfather, William Constantino, whose parents, Paolo Constantino and Elisabetta Santoro Constantino, came from Abruzzi. They, they came as shepherds. My great-grandfather then worked construction, building a reservoir in central Massachusetts. And my grandfather then became a state legislator and a municipal court judge in Massachusetts, and of course, always an active participant and officer in the Knights of Columbus. So he was very dear to me, and in his memory, I just wanted to say to you, grazie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bonin. And with that, if I can have Mr. Perosi say a few words, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Welcome and congratulations, sir.
Thank you. I'm very excited to receive this honor from the City Council of Los Angeles. I feel very proud that my personal involvement in different activities in the Italian community has been appreciated. I share this honor with a very good friend of mine that passed away last month in Ischia, Italy, Mr. Gianni Loro. Family members here present, my lovely wife Cookie has been on my side from the day I arrived. Larry, this month, we will be celebrating 53 years of marriage.
Wow.
We have four kids, Jerry, Dominic, Anthony, and Amy. I have my daughter-in-law Carol, and son-in-law Carolyn, and son-in-law Christian. They gave us eight grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. America has been good to us, and we have given back, promoting the best Italian image possible. Our Councilman Buscaino family came from Italy, as my family did, today serving the people of the 15th District. My son Anthony is an executive of Boeing Communication and Commissioner of Port of Los Angeles. This is a product of Italian immigration in North America. Today, we are celebrating Italian Heritage Month, saying to America, thank you for what you have given us. Today, America, we have a gift for you, for now and for the future. Councilman Buscaino and Commissioner Pirotti, viva l'America, viva l'Italia. Grazie.
Bravo, bravo.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. I love you. I love you. Oh, you can't walk away without Mama Rosa's pasta sauce. We recommend wheat pasta.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you wanna get a photo of this brand of mine?
Yes.
Mr. Engler, I owe you a bottle, I know, you keep reminding me.
Yeah, we have to.
Okay. Open photo. Bye, bye, bye. Say, bye, Benny. We're gonna take another as well. With that, if I can have all of our Italian-Americans, please rise, Channel 35, if you can get an aerial shot of these lovely people representing the Italian-American community, we love you. Yes, everyone's Italian today. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and our mayor, Garcetti, whose grandparents immigrated from Italy to Mexico, what an amazing story, we recognize the month of October, Italian-American Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles. You can clap. You guys all, come on. Manny, 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 Manny. Here, Mom, any color? All right. All right. Tutti, tutti. All right, we'll all go in the back. Okay. Hey, let's all go to the back, make sure you grab your purses with you. Oh, sorry, hold on, I spent... We're gonna go around. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, colleagues, for this, this opportunity to share our culture and our heritage. Thank you. Super job. We're gonna go around. You go around, and we'll take pictures of you, okay? Grab your belongings.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Let's give him one more round of applause. Thank you all. Thank you for coming. As we begin to move forward, Madam Clerk, as the room clears, I think we should take up item nine, and then I will defer to Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President, as she's coming, for item 1B, which was previously received and filed, that item should be continued to October 24th.
Without objection.
And also, Mr. President, there's a request to continue item 1C to October 24th as well.
Ms. Martinez, we do have, so we'll take the cards later.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this year you have joined me as we've stood against sex trafficking in our city and recognize women heroes in our community. But today, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the hard work, dedication, and countless individuals to bring an end to violence against women. Most recently, the NFL scandals have brought to light the terrible impacts of violent relationships, and how eagerly our society is to cover these crimes up. Last month, President Obama celebrated the 20th anniversary of the landmark Violence Against Women Act. And today, we recognize how far we've come in fighting these terrible crimes. From the moment that the Violence Against Women's Act was introduced, it changed law enforcement practices, improved the criminal justice system, and created a network of services for victims. But most importantly, it recognized the toll that violence against women has in our society. This bill established new federal crimes of interstate domestic violence, stalking, double penalties for repeat sex offenders, and sparked the passage of laws at state level to protect victims. From dating to domestic violence to sexual assault, we must remember that violence against women takes many forms. Since the passage of the legislation in 1994, we have made great strides. Rates of domestic violence have decreased by over 50%. Still here in the United States, more than one in four women experience violence by an intimate partner, with three women per day dying at the hands of their partners. But these women are more than statistics. Each of, each one is somebody's daughter, wife, mother, and best friend. We cannot stop fighting until no woman fears returning home after work or consequences of angering a loved one. So today, I'm so proud to stand with a few incredible women that are helping victims of violence recover their lives to become survivors. Mary Ann Legu is here on behalf of the Northridge Hospital Center for Assault Treatment Services, also known as CATS, in the San Fernando Valley. CATS is the only 24-hour program for victims of sexual assault abuse in the San Fernando Valley and Santa Clarita. In addition to providing medical evidentiary exams for forensic interviews, CATS partners with the Valley Trauma Center to provide onsite case management and referrals to victims of all ages. I've worked with CATS since I've been in office and have seen the wonderful work they have accomplished in helping their patients, not only with the physical scars, but with the healing of mental scars as well. And with that, I would like to introduce Mary Ann Legu.
Very pronounced her name.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to come here, and thank you for all that you have done for us. The council has been very supportive, and they have helped us into an amazing facility that helps these women. And without that support, this is a crime that was usually kept in the dark. But just the fact that we're here today, we're able in this light to talk to you about this. We are making a difference, we are helping. We are the first contact that our victims have through that legal system. So if we, with the support of Strength United, that we're co-located with, and law enforcement, can make that first contact as easy as possible, we can help that victim go through the entire legal system. They need a lot of help, they need a lot of support, and we are giving that all the time, but it is wonderful to see the support that you are giving back to us. You are making an amazing difference. We thank you for everything. Nuri has just been amazing, helping us, and we have a run in the spring for child abuse. We do, on average, 90 cases a month, and that is really probably 10% of what is happening out there. But the more we get out, the more we talk, the more people know where to go, and so for that, I'm very, very grateful that you would bring us here and help us. We are making a difference, but we have to continue. Even child abuse is on the decline, but that's where we want to keep it. And thank you, thank you, thank you again. I'm so proud to be here and proud to be a part of this program, and for all the help that you've given us. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I would also like to introduce Ann Conco. She's with Strength United, a program out of Cal State Northridge's Michael Eisner College of Education. This program uses interdisciplinary approach to ending abuse and violence through the collaboration of mental health professionals, educators, researchers, students, and volunteers. From a family justice center to counseling, a 24-hour response program, Strength United is providing a wonderful service for every part of an affected family in the San Fernando Valley. Please help me welcome Ann Conco.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Martinez, for inviting us here today. Strength United is so proud to be celebrating the 20th anniversary of the Violence Against Women Act. It is an honor to be here to acknowledge the tireless efforts of all those who worked together to pass the act in 1994 and its subsequent reauthorizations. Our agency and hundreds of others across the country are able to provide a coordinated community response to domestic violence, bringing together diverse stakeholders in law enforcement, social services, and mental health as a direct result of the Violence Against Women Act. But our work, our work is far...
Oh, continue, please.
Thank you. As Councilmember Martinez referred to, our work is far from done. One in three women are, in this country, are still victims of domestic abuse in their lifetime, and one in five victims are, women are victims of rape. Along with acknowledging the vital work of the past, today's resolution calls on us to rededicate our efforts to end these preventable traumas. The only way for this to happen is by events like we are having here today, where our entire community comes together to break the silence that all too often surrounds this issue. Only by uniting to provide support for victims, and programs like those provided at Strength United and CATS to serve victims and prevent violence from occurring in the first place, will we end the cycle of abuse. In this vein, I would like to invite each of you to an event that Strength United is hosting next Saturday, October 25th, called Walk a Mile in Their Shoes, an event where we will gather and march a mile in solidarity with victims of violence while raising funds for programs at Strength United. At this walk, many men choose to march a mile in heels to show solidarity with victims. For more information about that, please go to walkamile.strengthunited.org. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. I also want to recognize the Commission on the Status of Women, they were having their meeting this morning, but they came down to council chambers to help us recognize the importance of this, of this legislation, so please help. Thank you so much, ladies.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for coming down.
They are wonderful. And thank you both for joining me this morning to bring light to this important work in our community. I asked for an I-vote when we take up the item, and I have certificates for both CATS and Strength United. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, if you could just stay there for a minute, we do have colleagues of ours that want to speak on this item. I just want to start off by saying God bless, God bless you all for the, the work that you do. I was raised in an era where people would say, that's their family business, you know, it's, it's not for us. That was wrong then, and it's wrong now. Any man that would beat his children and to beat his wife will never, ever be a man. So I want you to know that this council stands with you in solidarity, and we would not tolerate any behavior like that. So if there's anything that we can do, we will be available to you. And anybody that's listening, a man can never be a man if you beat up on somebody that you know that you could beat up. That is one of the most disgusting things that, when I think about, it just really... So we're with you. With that said, I want to turn it over to Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Voice from above. I just wanted to, to rise, thank Ms. Martinez for bringing this important issue forward, bringing this recognition on the anniversary forward. You know, for me, it has a lot of meaning. You know, 20 years ago in 94, I was working in Washington DC for Congressman Howard Berman at the time, and I remember very clearly when this passed, and, and the hope that went along with this, and, and the coalitions that were formed, and we were, we were very strong supporters of it then, and, and over the last 20 years, all, all that's happened, there's been a lot of very good progress made in these last 20 years. And I'm proud to have been playing a small role in different ways, when having a domestic violence summit, doing several different bills in the legislature about freezing assets of human traffickers, and then following that up here in the council to make sure that the city is actually doing that. Working with you, Ms. Martinez, on these issues is, is very important to me, and so I want to redouble my pledge to do that and to work with you and to, and all of the advocates, many of whom I know well. So I just wanted to rise, add my voice in strong support and urge an I-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, for those words. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Martinez in particular, and all of you in helping to recognize the 20th anniversary of this important act. I think at the time, we expected that this would really set the stage for an end to violence against women, and we know a lot of progress has been made from shelters, to hotlines, to all kinds of other things, and it's changed the dialogue in our country. But we still know we have a long way to go. Everything from the celebrity cases we see, to, to human trafficking, to the epidemic of violence against women on our campuses, which we're just starting to get a handle on, we know we have a long way to go. But this act 20 years ago was a great first step, and I think by the work that all of you do, and all of us need to do, we will move much closer towards an end to violence against women in this city and in this country.
Thank you for those words. You may want to take a seat. I do have some public comment cards on this issue, so if, Ms. Martinez, if you could present.
Thank you very much.
One more round of applause for a bunch of very courageous women. And again, Ms. Martinez, thank you so very much. So do I have a Marine, Chris Hollickus, maybe, is that it? If you could please come to the center podium? And again, it was so good to see you all. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, council, and support of what's been shared this morning already. I'd like to call your attention to a couple things. I've provided you with some documentation of the Violence Against Women's Act and the federal monies... the Violence Against Women's Act and the federal monies that have been appropriated for communities across America to address this issue. And as you will notice, there is sizable monies that have been appropriated for our communities. And that is likely an indication of how serious this issue is. And so if the city can embark on receiving some of these monies to further the great work that's been done, it would be fantastic. The second issue I'd like to just mention is more preventive. I call your attention to the Los Angeles Times this morning, our blessed newspaper for this city. If you look at the calendar section, for instance, there is an indication that the leaning in our culture is very oriented to fraternal or male support and preference in public spheres. If we can work towards balancing that, it would be very good for the long term and hopefully preventing violence against women. You will see the photos in this newspaper, very promoting of male authority in men and very defeating of women. And just the photos, if you glance through the photos. So these are just calls that I study in my work. I present to you, in your leadership, to address, if you can. Thank you and to be sensitive to. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out and for the information that you have provided us with. Thank you very much.
I'll leave this here. Thanks.
If I could now call on Brian Barajas. Please come forward, followed by Mr. Walsh.
I just want to make a quick comment. Anybody who does violence against anybody, not only does it not make you whatever, whatever gender is, but it makes you, it's not human to be violent towards anyone.
I agree with you. Mr. Walsh. Followed by Mr. Herman.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. As you know, we are fighting a rape epidemic in Hollywood. They mentioned, the awardees mentioned rape. Okay. I say to everyone, go to Crime Mapping LA, subscribe for free, and then you can find out every day, the way I do, how many rapes and how many crimes were committed within a two-mile radius of where you live. And I'm telling you, I, I live right next to the Capitol Records. Over 300 rapes within a two-mile radius of Capitol Records. Now, why isn't there a rape alert? The reason there is no rape alert, because the most important thing, and incidentally, most of these women are Hispanic. They go to the nightclubs. White men drug their drink, they bring them outside, a second person throws them in the car, they drive up in the hills and they rape her. They're known as Don Juan rapists. Everyone knows this goes on in the clubs. The clubs tolerate it. And this is Don Juan rapists. Now, the reason that no one will get up here and say, on Sunday, say John Walsh is an idiot and there are hardly any rapes. You want to say that? I've got it in Crime Mapping LA. The reason is that if they held, if Beck and the, and the police, the police chief Beck called a rape alert, it would hurt tourism. So I want the people to know, and Hispanic women go to nightclubs much more often alone than white, Asian, or other, other unaccompanied women. Women are being, Hispanic women are being raped in Hollywood. Go check it out. No one gives a damn.
Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Akala.
No human being or person, as Mr. Barajas brought out and then Mr. Walsh brought out, deserves to be harmed by any offensive contact, whether it's intentionally done or simply because you're outraged because you don't have the ability to control your actions, Mr. Corretts. But I'm going to stay on this topic because I'm trying to deter future wrongdoing on any person, especially not just women, but anyone who's assaulted in the city of Los Angeles. Los Angeles has become, yes, Mr. Kukorian, we become the victims-
Why don't you just speak to the body?
We become the victims of violence. Violence in the homicides, violence in the problems we experience within our communities, and yet little, very little outreach to control the situation for those who don't have the ability and the conduct, again, to address what residents want, which is strengthening the protections it provides all of us to refrain from the basic human right to be free from violence, free from violence, free from abuse. Free at last. For abuse and violence is unacceptable in City Hall. Violations of the Brown Act and extreme use of force, again, is without consent, unreasonable force, and unconscionable by the persons who take assault and battery, penal code 240, as something unreal. But just to remind you, on October 7th, during general public comment, when I was assaulted under two hours-
No, you're not on the subject. Stay on the subject. No, you're not. Thank you. This is too important of an issue for us to play these games. Mr. Akala?
Wish to speak one minute on the subject because I am a victim too. You know what I mean? The homeless get beat up-
No, you're not on the subject. You're not on the subject.
Women, women get violated more than guys. It's a fact. But some guys get violated too. So I'm just talking about the other side of the coin. You know, I feel like I got assaulted by my wife by throwing me out of my own house, and then the real estate people came and took over. What do you call that? Counter domestic violence? Or using your womanhood to cause violence? Hello? You can do it, you can do it both ways. One minute, hold one minute, hold one minute.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Martinez, we're now going to vote on this item. No applause. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, let's move on. Item eight, card special by Mr. Akala, item eight.
Uh, yeah. escrow accounts. Escrow. Here we go. 252 East 81st Street, case number, accessory number, uh, 403 Alkansas Avenue, accessory ID, uh, East Fairmont Street, East Gray Drive. How many people are you, how many people are you bothering around the city, city council? People that already bought a home. You are pretending to help everybody, but all you're doing is causing more and more and more homelessness by bothering everybody in these real estate issues. You should not be allowed to be controlling everybody's place to live. You are a bunch of greedy mothers that only serve your own interest by letting the developers give you money under the table. Blah, blah, blah.
No, you got to speak where we can hear you and understand what you're saying.
I am saying that you are a bunch of-
Please stay on the subject. That has nothing to do with this subject. No, it doesn't. Come on, Mr. Akala has, stay on the subject, then you, I'll let you talk.
Assessor, all these legalese keeps the people from being happy to be on earth. All these legalese is to your favor. And the people put you here. You are our public servants, and you are on top of us. We cannot shake you loose.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. Akala, item 11. He passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
We'll move to item 12. Mr. Akala passes. Mr. Walsh on item 12?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Well, I live in this general area, flashing beacons 24 hours at the intersection of Fountain and Bronson Avenues. This is very cryptic. I assume this concerns traffic safety, probably put on here by the bicycle lobby. We're all for this. But I just want everyone that lives not, doesn't live in Hollywood, remember, the first priority is not blacks or Hispanics or poor whites neighborhoods. The first priority is always Hollywood and to protect people. Because Hollywood, let's face it, is mostly white people. Again and again, this rainbow coalition here votes white. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's the next item that's on the agenda?
Item one, call special for cards.
Okay, why, why don't we call forward Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Akala. Mr. Akala on item one, followed by Harold, Harold Barandeca, or something close to that, Harold. Yes, Mr. Akala.
I am just here to make the public aware of what City Hall does to people. 10 409 South McKinley Avenue, you owe us $976 just because we say so. 66 North Toyota Avenue, or Tyrone, you owe us $2,860 just because we say so. South Cloverdale Avenue, you owe us $2,803 just because we say so. North Whip Way, you owe $736 just because we say so. East Lomira Boulevard, you owe us $1,146 just because you were stupid enough to buy a home and just because we say so. North Eldorado Avenue, lien, $3,376 just because we are the city and we are the Roman Empire and just because we say so. You little idiots, you should stop buying homes and rent an apartment. 10 158 North Canoga Avenue, you owe us $397 just because we say so. West Almerd Street, you owe us $3,686 because you live in a richer neighborhood and just because we say so. Give us your money, you suckers. You elected us, and we can do it. And we can take your house away, and we can do anything we want.
Thank you. Okay, Harold, is that you? Come on up, and if you pronounce your last name for us.
Yes, Your Honor, it's Barandeca.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, sir. I'm here because unfortunately, I didn't know I had a, a pay to, had a lien on my property. And unfortunately, we were victims of fraud, Your Honor, and one of our contractors demolished our home. And also, by the way, we are veterans and active military members. And we would like to find out if we can be granted a request to pay our lien.
Okay, I'm having conversations with the staff from that area. And before we vote on this, hopefully I'll get some information from them. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Herman?
To Speaker, I pass.
Okay, Mr. Herman passes on this. Okay, so what, what I'm going to do on your, your item, Madam Clerk, can we continue that item? Can we continue that for two weeks? I'd like to have Mr. Labange. So what we're going to do is continue it for two weeks, afford you the opportunity to have conversations with Tom Labange's office. So do, do we have any Labange staff that are down here? If not, if you're available, would you come down and speak to this gentleman? Anyway, sir, you have two weeks. So Madam Clerk, I'd like to continue. This is 1D, right?
Correct.
For two weeks, and that would bring us to what date?
October 31st.
So you have until October 31st.
Oh, can you clarify, October 31st to pay the fee?
Well, I want to have you, see the gentleman in the vest? Why don't you begin your conversation with him? He's on the front row. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, let's, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's now go to item 10. Mr. Walsh, item 10. John, item 10. Followed by Mr. Herman. And does Mr. Akala have any more time?
No.
No, you don't. So if Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman.
JohnWalsh@HollywoodHighlands.org. Again, you know, they come up hundreds of them. There's at least one or two in every single meeting. This is a reward for the shooting death of a, of a woman, Ania Parker. $50,000. I'll bet you my left arm that no one's going to collect that $50,000. Because if you've seen my shirt, I'll have to wear it again, that I bought on Hollywood Boulevard. They've sold out the first, it says, "Snitches Get Stitches." Anybody who gives any information about a murder will be, have their throat sliced. And again, I challenge you once, and in the last 10 years, you've given out one of these. You have hundreds of them sitting there. It's ridiculous. Go after the gangs. Rewards mean nothing. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Herman.
Americans, snitches get stitches, and the reward process here is ridiculous. Minimally Minimally impacted, these provisions of rewards for human rights to be free from violence and death is a poor excuse by this city. A very poor excuse. So fellow Americans, when it comes to your rights for a reward, just remember that snitches get stitches. Come here every week and hear the sad excuse of the city offering $50,000 for a reward for your family member or a friend who has been shot, murdered, and killed. And if you're a tourist, you might become a victim. I say, read the news and hear our news because tourists are dying on our streets in Los Angeles and even in the poor communities of the Angelino areas. So again, Neil Kashkari for governor. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. We'll go to item 13. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman. Mr. Walsh, item 13, sir.
This is a signalized crosswalk for white people and for white tourists. This is on Vine Street, there's not an exact address. I want everybody out there, is there a single person, if there are 50,000 people watching this, is there a single person out there who can think of a crosswalk that would do great? Do great, would make your neighborhood much safer? No. Everybody knows that they need crosswalks. But remember, if you're, who remembers the folk song, "If you're white, that's all right." Now, if you're brown, you can stay around, but if you're black, stay back, stay back, stay back. I'm the only one who gets up here and speaks for your neighborhoods because your own politicians, your black politicians are all bought and sold. Why is there a signalized crosswalk for Vine Street, the white neighborhoods, when there are thousands of crosswalks that should be built in minority neighborhoods?
And you really think that there are no crosswalks built in minority areas? He's hollering back, you keep up with a dialogue like this, I'm gonna have to ask you to control yourself.
There's no excuse to kick out a fellow speaker who's correct. Again, the violations of Section 504 states that no qualified individual with a disability in the United States shall be excluded or denied the benefits or subjected to the minimum ability of this city of Los Angeles to provide, again, to provide, that's a nice birthday cake, by the way, to provide, again, the provisions for what? To take out from the Hollywood Mobility Trust fund account $8,400. This is item 13, sir.
You just speak.
I'm dealing with the installation of a signal light here. The last one cost $250,000, almost a quarter million last week, and now this one's costing even more. So again, the violations of Section 504, disability rights, to provide the provisions of safe sidewalks, safe streets, again, how do they do it? Oh, Mr. O'Farrell will know because he's on the Department of Disabilities Commission.
Address the chair.
And I sat in that commission and on that chair to hear what Mr. O'Farrell's friend has suffered on her disability. And I'm sad to say, again, every person's affected by the infrastructure that this city does not provide, all of you, again, all you hardworking taxpayers.
Speaking to the microphone.
And more so because in Hollywood and affluent areas gets their sidewalks and streets and signals fixed first versus minorities because the racism of this body of 15 council members rejects myself.
Stay on the item.
For your actions and low self-esteem.
That has nothing to do with the crosswalk. Thank you so much, Mr. Herman. Sergeant, show him his seat. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell. In fact, Mr. O'Farrell, I'm gonna ask you to sit down. And I'm gonna recognize Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez, you could just grab one of the microphones there. Don't fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize and wish my, our colleague, Mr. Mitch O'Farrell, a very happy birthday.
All right.
On behalf of the City of Los Angeles.
Happy birthday.
We want to wish you a big, best wishes for a beautiful day. Now go and.
Happy birthday, Mr. O'Farrell. And before you go to attend to the hard work of blowing out all those candles, I want to recognize you for an introduction.
Thank you. Thank you so much. There aren't enough candles on that cake, by the way. I won't tell you how many should be on there, but there should be a lot more than that. But, Mr. President, colleagues, it gives me great pleasure. We have a visiting delegation from Tajikistan. Please rise. Human Relations Commission, yes, thank you. The Youth Ambassador Cohort, and we have a senior policy analyst from the Housing Community Investment Department, Sheldon Cruz, there hosting this wonderful delegation from Tajikistan. Welcome to Los Angeles and City Hall.
Thank you. Welcome. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, dear Ms. Martinez.
Anyway, happy birthday, dear friend and colleague. Happy birthday. Mr. Krikorian, it's my understanding that we need to go into closed session for one item.
Yep.
So since the room is being used in the back, sergeants, if you could please clear the chambers. This will not be a long closed session, but we need to go into closed session. Please clear the chambers. Gilbert, you should have your, have your staff find a country that would not, you know, make you and I a knight. I mean, Joe is up there, chest poked out with his little badge on his lapel. Maybe we could become marquise or something, I don't know. I wanna be the Duke of Earl. Are we ready to go? Okay, so, is it, Madam Clerk, you need to make an announcement, or is it the city attorney?
Actually, Mr. President, Mr. Krikorian or a member should make a motion.
Mr. Krikorian, I'm told that a motion needs to be made.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to reject the appeal.
A second.
Based on advice of counsel.
Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
Okay, if I could call, I believe it's Cynthia Lester. Hector Serrano.
Hi, you already started the clock, is it time?
Sergeant, can you move the chair? Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm just here another day drowning in parking tickets and moving violations, and I'm just trying to move out of poverty. I'm still trying to find a stable job, since 2012 I've been out of, out of school, all they gave me was $200 in food stamps, and that's our safety net. I really wanna fight for a base income for everyone because there are families fighting over money for food, I'm trying to keep families together, and, you know, everyone just needs to have a little bit of a safety net, and this means that people who have, who are lucky enough to get jobs will still have jobs, and, and great, they can have bigger houses, but you need to give something for us to get by on. I, I just think that we need to reallocate money from war to take care of our people, and I think this is the best way to do it, give everybody just a social security check and, and save social security for everyone.
Thank you, if I could get Mr. Serrano, Serrano, are you here? Henry, please come forward, followed by Juan Akala. Mr. Marine, followed by Juan, whoever gets here first can speak.
As you know, paragraph eight of M U 35 shows that no worker shall remain employed under disagreement past one year. However, Hackla and Collette's stubs show how workers were employed under agreements with unions on a temporary basis past one year, past five years, past 10 years, past 17 years. That means this money was diverted from public employee pension and benefit plans because apparently the members of the Hackla Board and the City Council don't know their fiduciary duty to provide money to union, to public sector trusts, namely Hackla, I mean, Calpers and Lasers for the benefit of public employees. And ain't nobody listening, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Krikorian, you're ignorant by your own choice, Mr. Krikorian.
He should address the council as a whole.
You're as the whole, you're in the hole.
Thank you, Mr. Akala.
Well, you are trying to minimize the people by giving us only one minute to speak, but you know what, you assholes, you're not gonna stop us, you're not gonna stop the people. You're a bunch of pigs, that's what you are, you don't listen to anybody, look at Krikorian and that other guy. Huh? Would you like to go to the gay parade? Mr. Bonin, I was there, I honor everybody. Half the city council is gay, and you know what the, the Jamaicans are calling you? Because you go and bother them at the boardwalk in Venice, they're calling you white niggers because you go around dictating and pretending to be the great human beings that you're not, you're a piece of shit.
Okay, Brian Barajas, followed by Mr. Walsh.
All right, please log on to larushpak.com. I think I'll take Dr. Alster home, Michael Alster home. He works for the CDC, Minnesota University. He said that the worst thing that any doctor can do is lie to people that Ebola isn't bad. But Larush says that the most important thing we can do is minimize the death rate. If Ebola has a 70 to 90% death rate, how can we minimize it? Obviously, get a raid, electrolytes, gloves, protective wear, that's all important, but it's gonna have to come from a top-down measure. Forcing Obama out of office, that's gonna be key. He's the one even pushing that Ebola's not that bad, he's crazy.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, I'm gonna ask again for Hector Serrano. Okay, Mr. Walsh, please come forward, followed by Mr. Herman.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The area of this city, the areas of central LA and east LA are in desperate need of more crosswalks, and you just added a crosswalk to Hollywood. We're doing okay here, but the most important thing is you go to our website, remember, no on Jerry Brown's brown water, no on his brown water bond. You know what he should do with his brown water bond? He should drink the brown water. Remember, it is racist, and it will create two gigantic tunnels that will dry up the delta, the Sacramento Delta. No on one, no on two, no on 44, nor on 45, no on 46, no on 47, no, 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 no on all the propositions. Send a message to Sacramento, no more of your special interest propositions, no, 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 no.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman.
Angelinos, it is in our best interest not to support any proposition whatsoever at all. Say no, no, no to all propositions. Remember, it's treason, it's treason by the tyrannical special interests who take away your privileges. And then again, I won't talk about Mr. Krikorian, he has his chair turned around, however, Mr. Corretts, every time I come up here, steps away because of the assault he did to me on October 7th, two hours and three minutes. That's called battery, and I find that very offensive, what he did, grabbing my arm here on the podium during general public comment for one minute. Detour of the future wrongdoings, vote for Neil Kashkari for governor, and again, no, no, no to all propositions, and you get what you got, Mr. John Daisy, you're out of here.
Thank you, thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes general public comment. That brings us then where on our agenda?
Counsel has motions for post and referral.
Consider that they are posted and referred, announcements, members' announcements. Mr. Buscaino.
Mr. O'Farrell, bon compleanno, enjoy your day, happy birthday, brother, enjoy your day, sir. How old are you? Just kidding.
That's that night stuff again. Any other, Mr. Fuentes?
President, just wanted to remind my colleagues, those of you who are participating, thank you again, the Buddy Walk is gonna be here again, Second Annual Buddy Walk here at City Hall, where we're walking with our development of disabled community, it's gonna be from 11 to 2 PM tomorrow, see you all here, thank you very much.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, if we could all rise, we're going into adjourning motions, if we could all rise in the council chambers, if we could please stand up. I'm gonna look to my left side, Mr. Fuentes' side, do we have any endorse, any adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions on this side? I will look to the right, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, I want to just recognize the passing of a wonderful actress, Elizabeth Peña, who graced such films as Lone Star and got her start in her claim to fame when Paul Mazursky selected her for the film Down and Out in Beverly Hills. She was taken away from us after a very brief illness, way too young at the age of 55. She was most recently seen as one of the characters in Modern Family, from what I understand, but she was really one of those sublime actors who, anytime she was in a film, especially in the film Lone Star, I recommend everyone watch that film and see Elizabeth Peña's masterful performance in that, in that great film from the mid 90s. Again, a great Hollywood actress, and she will be missed.
Yes, she will, she was excellent. So with that said, any more adjourning motions, members, this council meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your weekend.